There we go. All right, let's get this thing wide enough. Let's take that to. Here we go. All right. Let's get going. Let's make sure your calculators are cleared out. All right. So Dr. E is depositing $50,000 into a mutual fund today. He hopes it will earn 7% annually. What should the value of the fund be in 20 years? Okay? So using the formula. Fifty thousand, that's not very dark, is it? Times 1.07 raised to the 20th. Or 50,000 plus minus is the present value. Twenty is the N. Seven is the IY. Compute future value. And what do we get? Tap, tap, tap.
One hundred ninety-three thousand forty-four point two-two. Four-eight-four.
Yep, four-eight-four, look at that.
One-nine-three-four-eight-four.
Ah! Wrong. Four-eight-four, right?
Yes, sir.
Landon, get it right.
Yes, sir.
You got it right.
Okay.
I'm the one who didn't get it right. All right. So here we go again, one-ninety-three, four-eight-four. Point twenty-two. You will. All right. Let's make this an annuity. Well, that's not an annuity due. We'll leave it at that. Well, um, we'll do it. All right. Let's erase that. Try to keep it on this one. Woo, done erased very well, does it? Moving on. Dr. E wants to retire. Man, tired. He saved a half million dollars, five-hundred thousand. He wants to take $4,000 per month out. How long will the money last if he earns 5% annually? So. Man, I do not like, it's just not dark enough. See if this one's any better. Five-hundred thousand. Plus minus present value. Four thousand. Is the payment. Five divided by twelve equals, uh... Point four-one-six-six-seven is the IY. Compute N. And what do you get?
One-seventy-six point nine-four.
Let's call it one-seventy-seven, one-hundred seventy-seven months. Divided by twelve. And I get fourteen, one-seventy-five years. All right, let's make this an annuity due. So hit, um... Second. And payment. Second and enter. And your screen should say BGN. And then hit compute N. See if it does it, just that way. It won't last quite as long. No? Get your clear calculator, I can do it all again. Okay. So second and payment, second and enter, and it should say BGN. Then clear. And then fifty thousand plus minus is your present value, four thousand is your payment. Five divided by twelve equals is your IY. And compute N.
Twelve point eight-one.
How many months is it?
I just got twelve point eight-one, that's what it popped up with.
Twelve point eight-one. That doesn't make sense.
Hundred seventy-five.
There you go. Hundred seventy-five divided by twelve is what?
Two point seven.
Ah, so just barely. Doesn't change much, since it's just one month. Okay. Let's hit second, payment, second and enter again and clear. Now we're reset for an ordinary annuity. That's all you have to do to turn, to set your calculator for an annuity due. So an ordinary annuity means this payment here, you get at the end of the first month. An annuity due, you get this payment immediately. That's the only difference. All right. Dr. E is planning his retirement. I don't know, what's the theme of this thing? I ain't that old. I'd run out of that much energy. All right. He's currently forty years old. Man, I wish. He wants to retire when he's sixty-two. He thinks he'll need seventy-five-hundred dollars per month to live on in retirement. He hopes to live for twenty-five years after he retires. So eighty-seven, ripe old age, and we all think we're gonna live to age seven. He currently has a half million dollars saved. If he can earn 5% on his money, how much will he have to save each month? So he will have enough money to retire on. All right? So, let's draw a timeline here. So I'm forty. And then I wanna retire at sixty-two. So that's twenty-two years times twelve. So how many months is that? How many, yeah.
Two-hundred sixty-four.
Do what?
Two-hundred sixty-four.
Two-hundred sixty-four months there. All right, so I got, I'm counting the months till retirement. Two-hundred sixty-four months. Then sixty-two to eighty-seven. Okay? And so that's twenty-five years times twelve. So what is that? How many months is that?
Three-hundred.
Three-hundred months in retirement. All right. So the first thing we have to do is find out how much we're gonna need to retire. How much do we need here in order to pull the payments out? So we have three-hundred is our N. And five divided by twelve equals point four-one-six-six-seven is our IY. Okay? And seventy-five-hundred is our payment. Compute present value. How much are we gonna need? Got awfully quiet in here. We're finding the present value of three-hundred payments of seventy-five-hundred dollars a month at point four-one-six-six-seven IY.
I got one million, two-hundred eighty-two, nine-fifty.
Two, one million, two-hundred eighty-two, nine-hundred fifty dollars. One million, two-hundred eighty-two thousand, nine-hundred and fifty dollars, right? Landon?
Yes, sir, that's all I got.
That's it. So we're gonna need that right here. Okay? Now, so this becomes our future value. So one million, two-eighty-two. On nine-fifty. Is our future value. And two-hundred sixty-four is our N. And five divided by twelve, four-one-six-six-seven is our IY. Compute present value. How much are we gonna have to save every month?
Four-hundred twenty-eight thousand thirty-four dollars.
Mm-mm. That's a lot of money every month.
Two thousand six seventy-six.
Do what?
Two thousand six seventy-six. Do we need to divide what I said by twelve?
Do what? Divide what by twelve?
What I got to that?
No, 'cause you already divided the IY by twelve.
So here, this is your future value. This is your N. Uh, divided by twelve is your IY. Compute pay, I'm sorry, I made a mistake. There's the mistake, sorry. There's the mistake. Computing payment. Sorry. How much do we have to save every month?
Two thousand six hundred seventy-six.
We still didn't get that. Let me see. One, two, eight, two, nine, five, zeros. Future value. Two sixty-four is our N. Five divided by twelve. This is our IY.
Two thousand six seventy-six.
Compute.
That's what they had to say.
Right?
Two thousand six hundred sixty-six.
One.
We need zero.
The N is two thousand.
Six seventy-six.
Two thousand. Yeah.
Yeah, the future.
Two thousand six hundred seventy-six.
Yeah. Five divided by twelve. IY. Where is that? That's weird. Yeah, I got two thousand six hundred seventy-six dollars as well. That, why is it, why is it saying that differently here? It says four forty-nine ninety-nine, that's not right. Oh, 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 oh! We're missing something here. We're missing something. You know why? What are we missing?
The five-hundred thousand.
Yeah. Yeah. That's right. That changes it. That changes it. Now what? So all you have to do is put five-hundred, one, two, three, reset. Present value. Compute payment. Yeah! That's it. That's it. That's it. It's four-hundred fifty dollars a month. So again, let's look at how we set this up. We have five-hundred thousand dollars, okay? But I should've written here, I'm so used to doing it without that, having, having any money at all. Five-hundred thousand dollars, we have already. We've saved that. So we gotta convert this into this. So we have two-hundred sixty-four months to do it. So the answer is four-hundred fifty dollars a month. Now, if this were in an IRA or 401K, we'd have to divide that by one minus the tax rate. It would change, it would change things. But if it were in an IRA, and we got matched, that would change things as well, in a positive way. So five-hundred thousand plus minus is our present value. Here's our goal, one million, two-hundred eighty-two thousand, nine-hundred fifty dollars. We have two-hundred sixty-four months to get there. Five divided by twelve is our IY. Compute payment. Does everybody see it? It helps to get all the information on it. So the, kind of the difference in this case is, we're starting with five-hundred thousand. But you know, we started working twenty-five, we started saving money. And we accumulated a half million dollars over a fifteen-year period. Twenty-five sounds young. Forty sounds old. It's only fifteen years. That's weird. All right. So let's see what, Dr. E, if I keep this up, I'm gonna have to retire early. All right. Dr. E is not only not retiring, but now he wants to buy a clothing business. He expects the business to generate the following cash flows. In tier one, I guess he's crying because he has to spend money. In year one, he's gonna make a hundred thousand. Year two, a hundred fifty thousand. Year three, two-hundred thousand. Year four, two-hundred twenty-five thousand. He will then sell the business for five times cash flow in year four. If his required rate of return is eighteen percent, how much should he pay for this business? Now, we need to find the present value of each cash flow. And there are two ways we can do it. We can use the cash flow keys, or you can simply go through and find the present value. So we have a hundred thousand. Divided by one plus, uh, one point one-eight raised to the first. Plus a hundred fifty thousand divided one point one-eight to the second. Plus two-hundred thousand. Divided by one point one-eight to the third. Plus, so we have two-twenty-five times six. That's two-twenty-five times five plus two-twenty-five. See that? So we're gonna get two-hundred twenty-five thousand plus five times two-hundred twenty-five thousand. So what's two-hundred twenty-five thousand times six?
One point three-five million.
And that's gonna happen in the fourth year. It's what, one point three-five million?
Yeah.
One million, three-hundred fifty thousand. Now, you can do it that way, or you can say CF zero equals zero. CO one is a hundred thousand. So forth. F O one, CO two, CO three, CO four. And CO four is a million, three-hundred fifty thousand. Enter down arrow. NPV I equals eighteen. Enter down arrow. Compute. You could do it that way, or you could just use the formulas. Y'all need me to spell it out longhand for you on the CF zero, on the C of cash flow keys?
Would it be one point one-eight or point one-eight for the F, for the CF zero one?
This is one point one-eight for, for I equals eighteen. But this is one point one-eight.
Can you do it longhand?
Yeah. CF zero equals zero. CO, okay. We can do it longhand, let's do it longhand. Enter down arrow. CO one equals a hundred thousand. Enter down arrow. F O one equals one. Enter down arrow. CO two equals a hundred and fifty thousand. Enter down arrow. F O two equals one. Enter down arrow. CO three equals two-hundred thousand. Enter down arrow. F O three equals one. Enter down arrow. CO four equals one million, three-hundred fifty thousand. Enter down arrow. CO, uh, F O four. Equals one. Enter down arrow. NPV I equals eighteen. Enter down arrow. Compute. And it should give you the same answer as finding the present value of each of these cash flows. Yep?
For, um, CF zero four.
Yep.
Could you put two-twenty-five thousand and then do for the F zero four six?
No.
No?
Uh-uh, because that'll take it out in multiple years. Okay, that all has to happen in one year. You could say CF zero four, and you could put two-hundred twenty-five thousand times six equals, put that in there like that. But you can't put F O four equals six. That you can't do. So what'd you get? What's that, what should I pay for this business?
One million, ten thousand, five, fourteen.
One million, ten thousand, five, fourteen? I have five fifteen. Just, we're off by a dollar. It's a deal killer. All right? Now let's do this. Let's say I wanna make twenty-five percent on this business. So hit NPV I equals twenty-five. I'm just curious. Enter down arrow. Compute. What do you get?
Eight-hundred thirty-one thousand, three-hundred sixty.
Yeah, so we'd have to pay less, a lot less if we wanna earn twenty-five percent. Let's say I'm okay making fifteen percent. NPV I equals fifteen. We'll pay more than a million dollars. How much? NPV I equals fifteen. Enter down arrow. Compute.
A million, a hundred, three thousand, seven hundred forty-eight.
Twenty-six.
Yeah, a million, a hundred, three thousand, seven hundred forty-eight. See how that works? Discount rate goes up, we can't pay as much. Discount rate goes down. So if I get into a bidding war with someone else, what are we bidding over? Okay? What we're bidding over is the estimated cash flows. We might disagree over how much we think the business is gonna make. Somebody else might think, I'm gonna put a lot more energy into this. I'm experienced at the clothing business, and I can, I can manage this company and generate more cash flow. Maybe they're thinking that, so they're willing. We both have the same discount rate, but somebody else might think they could be more aggressive and generate more cash flow out of it. Or someone else might think, you know what? I don't, I think this business is a slam dunk, and I'm okay earning fifteen percent on it. And I look at it going, you know what? I think there's a lot of risk here. If I can't earn eighteen percent, I'm not interested. And so the other person is gonna offer, in both cases, they're gonna offer a higher, making a higher offer on the business. Okay? See how that works? That's what you end up arguing over. All right. Let's get all these numbers out. Okay. Harding values Dr. E so much, they don't want me to retire. How about that? But they have offered him a deferred compensation plan. They'll pay him thirty thousand dollars per year for ten years if he'll stay another fifteen years. Man, I'm gonna be walking with a cane. The answer CF zero, Ashland, come right on the board for me, Lord. All right. But that's not Ashland, that's his grandson. Not that Ashland name is grandson. All right. Who's that next to him? All right. They'll pay him thirty grand a year, each year for ten years, and he'll stay another fifteen years. The plan will make his first payment to Dr. E in six years, so I have to stay here another six years to get my first payment. Pepperdine, out there on the left coast, the home of fruits and nuts. The home of, uh, used to be the home of, uh, what's his name, the rapper that just got shot?
Nipsey Hussle.
Yeah, Nipsey Hussle. You know, that's, that's terrible, those guys keep getting shot. You know, it was probably some disrespect. You know, he probably looked at somebody wrong, and the guy had a gun. And you look at somebody wrong, and he's got a gun, that gun is gonna just lift up automatically, boom! Kill somebody. It's the gun's fault, don't you know? All right, I said that in the first class, I didn't even say that in the second class. It's the gun's fault. That bad gun, bad gun. All right. I don't mean to make fun of it, I think it's tragic. I think it's terrible. I think it's awful. It's a commentary on the culture that they live in, that they don't value somebody's life. It's terrible. I hate that for everybody involved. They say the guy was a great artist, and I hate that. All right. Um, the plan will make his first payment to Dr. E in six years. Pepperdine has offered Dr. E an upfront bonus of two-hundred thousand. What should Dr. E do if Dr. Evil, do if his discount rate is six percent? Okay, so I need to compare Harding's offer with Pepperdine's offer. Okay? That's how this works. So we know Pepperdine's offer is two-hundred thousand dollars. Let's find the present value of this deferred compensation plan and compare it to Pepperdine. Okay? So, um, CF zero. Equals zero. Enter and down arrow. And CO one equals zero. Enter down arrow. And F O one equals six, I'm sorry, five. 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 Enter and down arrow. And CO six equals thirty thousand. Enter down arrow. And F O six equals five. No, fifteen. No, ten. 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 Enter down arrow. And so we're done. So, um, we're done with our cash flows. That means NPV I equals six. Enter down arrow and compute. And what's Harding's offer worth to?
One-hundred sixty-four thousand, nine-hundred ninety-six point five.
Yep. One sixty-four, nine ninety-seven. Looks like I'm packing up and moving to Beverly. Actually, Malibu. Gonna go back to the beach. All right, 'cause Pepperdine's offer is worth more than Harding's offer. Now, of course, that doesn't take into consideration the cost of living.
Okay, I have a question. So when you put the CO one is zero, and then you just do five years at the beginning?
Yeah.
What is the zero at the beginning?
That means nothing happens at the very beginning.
Okay.
And this is what happens at the end of time, year one.
Okay, so why is there not, uh, like a sixth year? 'Cause don't you?
Because in the six years, when I get.
Okay, so you get paid that sixth year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. All right. Dr. E's, he's busy. Oh, retiring, moving to Pepperdine, buying a clothing business, all in one year. And not only that, Dr. E wants to buy a new house. Wow. The bank says they'll lend him an amount such that the monthly payment is twenty-eight percent of the family's combined after-tax income. If they make two-hundred thousand dollars per year and earn the thirty-five percent tax bracket, what will the payment be? How much will the bank lend him? How much interest will he pay over life alone? How much principal will he retire in the second month? The mortgage terms are four-and-a-half percent APR for a thirty-year term compounded monthly. So let's do it, one thing at a time. First, what will the payment be? So we gotta find our, we take our taxable income, two-hundred thousand. Times one minus the tax rate. The tax rate is point three-five. So that's sixty-five percent, so that'll be what, a hundred thirty thousand dollars? Is my annual after-tax. Right? Then divide that by twelve. And we get my monthly income of ten thousand, eight-hundred and thirty-three dollars. Everybody see that? So then we take ten thousand, eight-hundred thirty-three dollars. Times point two-eight, twenty-eight percent of that. And the payment is three thousand, thirty-three dollars. That's the payment. That's the payment. Okay? So now, I have to find the present value of the payments. So 3033 plus minus is the payment. Plus you, 30 times 12 is 360, and that's the N. And 4.5 divided by 12 is 0.375, and that's the IY. Compute, present value. And what do we get?
598,596.
598, 596. That's how much the bank is going to loan me. Now, how much are we going to pay back to the bank? That would be 3033 times 360. How much are we paying back to the bank?
109,800.
Do what?
1,91,880.
Say again? Alright. Okay. That's how much we're borrowing. And that'll give us how much interest we're going to pay. Correct. There you go. That's how much interest we're going to pay. Okay? Now, let's amortize this loan over two months. So we have the payment number, and that's going to be 1 and 2. And then, we have the beginning balance, and that's 598, 596. And then we have the payment, and that's 3033 and 3033. And then we have the interest, and that's 0.375 times the beginning balance. So somebody multiply, 0.3, uh, I'm sorry, it's not 0.375, it's 0.00375. It's 0.045 divided by 12, right? So somebody multiply, 0.00375 times 598, 596.
2,244.74.
2,000? Let's just round it. Okay? Principal reduction. Alright, so let's take our payment minus our interest. That's our principal reduction. 3033 minus 2245.
788.
788. So now, we subtract 788, so 598, 596 minus 788 is what?
597,808.
Times our interest, what, 0.0375, our interest charge? And this will go up to 790, uh, 791. Let's subtract this from this, and what's our ending balance? There you go. See how that works? This is what the test is going to look like, all these questions. Ready for me to erase? Alright.
Did you get the ending balance?
Do what?
Did you get the ending balance?
Yeah.
You did beginning balance minus?
Beginning balance minus the principal reduction, correct.
How'd you get the 0.00375?
Uh, 0.045, which is the interest rate, divided by 12. Isn't that what that is? Is that right? Okay. Alright. Dr. E's considered two investments. One pays 8% annually, the other pays 7.5% compounded weekly. Which investment should he choose? Okay, so we have one investment that we know the APR. The other investment, we know the period rate, or actually, we know, we know the APR, and it's compounded weekly. So we have to find the EAR. So the EAR equals 1 plus the APR divided by the NPY raised to the NPY minus 1. So that is equal to 1 plus 0.075 divided by 52. Yep. Raised to the 52nd minus 1. So what's our, what's our effective annual rate? This is our APR divided by number of periods in a year, compounds weekly. What do we got?
I got 1.07 or 1.08.
Yeah, I was rounding too much.
1.0778.
Yes. Yeah, if you rounded up to 8%, then you're indifferent. So 0.075 divided by 52 equals, plus 1 equals, YX52 equals minus 1. So 1, 2, 3, 4. Order of operations. Go with the 8% APR, it's higher. Dr. E needs to buy inventory for his clothing store. The Daniel Permeu Company has offered to finance the inventory with the following terms. $6 per $100 borrowed, payable in 30 days. What is the APR? What is the EAR? Should I borrow? Should I put it on my credit card, or should I let Daniel Permeu finance it for me? So let's find the period rate. And that is $6 divided by $100 is 0.06. Times 100 equals 6%. Okay? And now, the 8, now let's find the NPY, which is 365, or we can do 360 divided by 30, it's monthly. Okay? So let's go ahead and do 360, let's, let's call it 12. Okay? Or actu- actually, we can do it exactly, 12.17, 365 divided by 30.
Can you try writing with a green marker? Someone ready on that divide?
There's a blue one down there, too.
Yeah, that was easy.
Colorblind. Okay. So now, the APR is equal to 0.06 period rate times 12.17. What do you get?
0.73.
Yep. 0.73 times 100 is 73%. Now, the EAR, which you're actually going to be paying, is equal to 1.06 raised to the 12.17 minus 1. Bless you. And what do you get? 1.0322 times 100 equals 103.22%. It's not 1.03%, don't forget that. That would make you sad. Alright. Concept question. If interest rates rise, what effect would that have on the present value of amounts to be received in the future? Interest rates go up, what happens to present value? Goes down. Interest rates go down, present value goes up. Interest rates go up, present value goes down. Interest rates go up, future value goes up. Interest rates go down, future value goes down. Direct relationship with future value, inverse relationship with present value. If you expect an amount of money to pay an annuity to you for a certain period of time, so you've invested a certain amount of money, and you expect to take a certain payment out over time, and interest rates go down, what are the implications of interest rates going down? So you've invested a certain amount of money, and the rate you expected to earn is now going to go down. What are the implications? Either you will have to take out less for a specified time period, or if you want to maintain that specified amount of money that you were taking out, the time period must become shorter. Those are the two implications. Interest rates go up, you can take more out over that specified period of time, or you can take the same amount of money you had planned to take out, and it will last longer. You need to understand the relationships between these variables. It's really important. That's how our system works. Okay? Those are the two concept questions. I think that's it.
Can you repeat number 10?
Yeah, if you expect an amount of money to pay an annuity to you for a certain period of time, and interest rates go down, what are the implications? Either you will take out less for that specified period of time, or the specified time period will become shorter. Those are the two consequences. Alright. Let's turn this film off, this video off, before I make a fool of myself. Too late. Too late, made a fool of myself.